I brought my thing to read and I can't see this in there. I've got a film on my eyes that I've got to go get fixed. Yeah, it's a letter to the editor. So this is what I can't seem to read. I thought it was really nice though. Do you see that? And the interesting thing is it's really nice about Waldenborough. It's from the only... Anyway, I thought it was really short and sweet and says nice things about...
Double jeopardy.
I like that.
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order, please. It's Tuesday, November 13th. This is the Waldenborough Select Board Meeting, 6 o'clock. Will we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no public hearing scheduled this evening. We do have an adjustment to the agenda.
At Lincoln Health?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor of that adjustment, please? Okay. And we'll put that on first and then move on to citizen comments. So gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Susan, do you mind?
Yeah, I will, I'll do that, so.
You want me someplace else so you can see the screen?
Is this the best of me to be here? Okay.
That way we can get you on tape.
Excellent. Thank you very much for adjusting your agenda this evening. We really appreciate it. My name is Jim Donovan, I'm the President of Lincoln Health. With me tonight is Scott Schott, who's my Vice President for Marketing and Development. We're here this evening as part of a series of meetings we've held with... We're trying to meet with every select board in Lincoln County. I think we're up to eight or nine, counting tonight, and have several more to go. And our goal has been to come around and talk about some of the key trends that are now driving us in our decision-making in healthcare. And also talk about a merger process that is about to be finalized within the main health system. And some of you may have heard about that. I think we talked about it a long... A couple of years ago, maybe, at a meeting we had. And I want to give you an update on that. I think most of you hopefully are familiar with this. I'm going to move through very quickly. So our organization is... We're spread out from here, from Waldenborough, with a practice that we've had in Waldenborough for going on 30 years, to Wiscasset, to Boothby Harbor, and to Damascata. Our services range from outpatient care, this Lincoln Medical Partners practice, which of course we have here. And we know, we share Waldenborough, if you will, with our friends from Coastal Health Alliance in Rockland. Our senior living continuum, both in Damascata and in Boothby Harbor. We... Nursing facilities, the full range on both campuses. And finally, inpatient services, hospital care in both Boothby Harbor and Damascata. The Boothby campus is an outpatient campus. Inpatient care is provided in Damascata. The trends that I want to touch on tonight are probably not surprising to any of you, but they are... What we're seeing is an acceleration, which depending on how you look at it, is good or bad, in these trends. Probably the most important trend that I've witnessed in my career, which dates back to the early '70s, is this one. And that's advancing technology. And how that has changed the way we take care of patients, the way we take care of our organizations, the way we take care of our people, the way we train our people, educate our people. And what is happening still is the advance of outpatient care of all types. When I started in this business, about 80% of what a hospital did was what a friend of mine used to call heads in beds. Patients in a hospital bed for a week or more. Today, about 20% of what we do is actually patients in a hospital bed. You have to be really sick to be admitted to a hospital these days. 80% of what we do is either in the physician offices, in various outpatient settings, including outpatient surgery, any of the diagnostic imaging departments. 80% of that is outpatient. And that trend is advancing. So I would guess it easily, within the next 10 years, that's going to be 90-10. And a lot of this is being driven by new technology, new procedures, new training by doctors and others. And that's expensive. Technology is expensive. And ultimately, the higher technology-driven specialties tend to be congregating more and more in the bigger institutions. And in Maine, for example, in the last 40 years in Maine, there's only two hospital service areas that have seen a growth in outpatient... I'm sorry, in inpatient admissions. Portland and Bangor. Every other hospital service area in the state has seen a decline in inpatient care. There's been a very clear outmigration from small communities across the state and inmigration into Bangor and to Portland. We don't see that changing either. The next one is kind of an old one, oldie but goldie, I guess, is how we're paid. So Lincoln County, Maine, is, depending upon how some people look at it, the oldest state in the country. Lincoln County, depending on how some people measure that, is the oldest county in Maine. What that means to us is that much of what we do is paid for by Medicare. So about 55% of what we do is paid by Medicare, and 10% of what we do is paid by Medicaid. Neither of which pays what it actually costs to take care of our patients. So we start out every day at a loss that we have to make up. And we make up this loss through what's called caution shifting, which is done across the country because none of us across the country are paid well by Medicare or Medicaid. What ends up happening is this big mustard-colored slice, that's Medicare, this is Medicaid, so that's two-thirds between them. And here's commercial and Anthem. So this is about 27%, this purple and blue slice. That purple and blue slice makes up the difference. All the costs are shifted from Medicare, Medicaid. This self-paid slice right here is essentially bad debt, 4.6%. So Anthem and Aetna and all the other commercials make up the difference in order to allow us to keep our heads above water slightly. Something that's been going on for a long time. Things are getting more and more challenging out there with politics in Washington and in Augusta. This is... If you're an employer or an employee, this won't surprise you. And this is one of the most visible components of the baby boomer generation. And that's the fact that we have workforce shortages across the state of Maine in every single industry and business. We're about halfway through the baby boomer generation right now. So we've seen part of it. We've seen half of it. The worst is yet to come. So we are looking at a workforce across Maine Health. There are 19,000 employees across the Maine Health system, and I'll talk about that a little more in a minute. 41% of us are over 50 years old. To cut it a little closer to home, 22.5%, so almost a quarter of my registered nurses are over 60. It's very difficult attracting young graduates to Maine of any... I would say of any profession. We find it in accounting, just as we find it in nursing. We find it in maintenance, just as we find it in any of the other workforce categories as well. So we're trying to figure out how to help ourselves and we have... Well, the next slide is going to kind of give a little depiction of what this really means on a day-to-day basis. When we talk about workforce shortages, what this really means for us, practically speaking, is we see a need sometimes to reduce capacity, to cut back hours, for example, cut back days of service because we don't have the staff. We've reduced services. We've cut back services permanently in some areas because of the same reason. And we've had to resort to this very expensive alternative of contracting for labor from outside companies, many times outside of the state of Maine, where we contract for somebody for two weeks, three weeks, three months, six months, and pay a very high premium for that. This, by the way, contract labor is a problem with every hospital in the state of Maine right now. So some very practical things that we deal with on a day-to-day basis that are directly related to workforce and the retirements of baby boomers in particular. So what are we doing about it? We're trying to grow our own as best as we can. I have three examples here. There are more. Certified nursing assistants, they're the backbone of the hospital and they are truly the backbone of our senior living facilities. We run CNA schools at least a couple times a year. We try to do it three times a year. There's a state program, apprenticeship-type program, that actually pays students to go to CNA school. We're involved with that. We provide scholarship funding if necessary. We can't get enough of them. Our nursing school... We have a nursing school, a registered nurse program in concert with Central Maine Community College in Auburn. We remain the only... The first and only college degree granting program in Lincoln County. We've graduated over 50 registered nurses since the program began about 10 years ago. We just were expanding the program this next year, from eight students a year to 12. It's a two-year program. So we're part of the Central Maine Community College class, but all of... All the clinical education is provided in Lincoln County for these nurses. The whole goal is to get them to stay in Lincoln County. We've been very successful in doing that with these folks. They tend to be non-traditional students, students not right out of high school, students who worked, who had another career, or going back after they've had a family, for example. It's been very successful. And then finally, we are part of the program with the Maine Medical Center, Tufts University School of Medicine program, where we host two third-year medical students for nine months out of the year. And the goal here is to expose medical students while they're in their third-year training to opportunities in Maine. And we have now, the two students we have with us right now, one of whom is a Waldenborough resident, have our seventh pair of Michael Ludwig. Anybody knows Mica? So Mike is here along with his partner, Sidney. They're here for nine months. They'll be with us. They just... When did they start? They started in June. And it's a great program. It's a third-year medical student, so they still have at least four more years of training after they leave us.
Whoops, sorry.
But it's a way we're kind of planting a flag with them to introduce them. So... And we teach all kinds of other students as well, but these are three good examples. Next one, please, Scott. Maine Health, that I'm going to talk about in a minute, has grown to the point where we are functioning more on a regional basis. And we have three regions in Maine Health. The southern region, which is York and Cumberland County. The western region, which is Franklin, Oxford, and Coax County, New Hampshire. And then Lincoln, Knox, and Waldo County, the coastal region. So we're doing a lot more in cooperation with our colleagues at Coastal Health Alliance, which is Penn Bay and Waldo. One of the examples, if you've been on our campus in the past few months, you've seen our new medical office building, the Watson Health Center, we call it. One of the priorities of our board and our strategic plan has been to be able to bring more subspecialists onto the Miles campus on a regular basis, so people don't have to travel for care to Portland. And we're doing this in concert with our friends in Rockland. We haven't had the physical facilities to do this before with our previous office buildings, which were small and out of date. This new building allows us much more flexibility to bring in subspecialists to care for patients locally.
It's got a great view.
It has a great... That's a beautiful view. Thank you. And what this building allows, bringing all the doctors who are on the Miles campus together in one building. So this floor up here is the specialty floor. This floor below is primary care floor. And down here is behavioral health practice. They're all in the same building. They can talk to each other more easily than they have been in the past, not having to go from building to building. It's a true team approach to care, and things are going very well. We're kind of still on a partial shakedown cruise. We've only been in the building since August. But it's going very well. People seem to be enjoying it. I get a lot of comments about the waiting rooms from patients and the view that the waiting rooms have of the Damascata River. Maine Health has been around for a long time, since 1997. And St. Andrews Hospital was the first community hospital to join Maine Health. Miles was the second. And it's grown to eight other... Or eight hospital systems now and three non-hospital members. Over the 20 years that we've been part of Maine Health, we've all kind of floated on our own bottom, financially, clinically. Maine Health has been a kind of a loose confederation, more than a tight system. And the past several years, things have been changing rather dramatically, as getting back to one of my first slides, as to how we're paid and how much we're paid for what we do, particularly from the federal and state government. And about two years ago, our boards of trustees, so 10 member... 10 Maine Health member organizations, about 200 or so community leaders, started discussions about whether the governance model, the loose confederation that we have right now, is really the model for us for the future. And is a more centralized approach, a merged model, will that provide more financial and clinical flexibility for the long term? And discussions went on literally monthly for two years. And our board talked to folks from Portland and went back and forth. And the same thing happened with the other member organizations, including Penn Bay and Waldo. And in the end, the boards decided that it was best if we centralized our organization, if we merged the eight-member hospital corporations into one, to provide greater financial flexibility for the future, to be able to better... Have better comfort with our responsibility to care for a very wide swath of the state, as you can see here in green. That green represents 1.1 million of the 1.3 million residents of Maine that live in what we consider to be our service area. So the process has actually... Will conclude at 11:59 PM on December 31st. And on January 1st, we will be merged into a single corporation. Now, you can merge corporations, but you can't merge licenses. So each of these organizations has to maintain all its individual licenses for hospitals, nursing homes, et cetera. And all that work will continue to be done locally. So we will be maintaining local boards. So the board of trustees I have right now will remain in place, as will for the other member organizations as well. And we'll continue to do the work that we do now around ensuring the financial viability of the organization, around ensuring quality and patient safety, and managing the workforce, et cetera. And the structure that we are putting in place will oversee a roughly $2.5 billion a year corporation, which is... It's... I can't wrap my head around those numbers. I can't. I... This is big. But it's real big. But the important part is, is that the ability to look more broadly, we will have a single board of trustees over the whole system, to which the local boards will report, which is not very different from what we do today. But the single board will have more ability to look financially across the system and make sure that we are serving our communities in the best possible way, ensuring services are available, ensuring local access. That's probably the most important message I can leave with you tonight. This is about ensuring local access for the long run, for the long term. We have threats to that right now. The board... The new board, because the questions we get is, okay, if there's only going to be one board, who's going to be on it? It's going to be represented... There'll be 25 members on this new board. And it's going to be 50% representatives from Cumberland and Cumberland County, and 50% from the other counties. That's a pure numbers game, because Maine Medical Center in and of itself is 70% of the Maine Health system is Maine Medical Center. So we're looking at those numbers. So each of the hospitals outside of Cumberland County have appointed a member to the board. Ours is a gentleman named Bruce Garren, who's a retired healthcare lawyer, actually, who lives in Damascata. He will be joining the Maine Health board come January 1st. And the other question we get, well, if we do that, if we have one board that's kind of based in Portland, maybe seemingly dominated by Portland, how do we ensure the local voice? Will we ensure the local voice through the local board that will continue? And we've worked through that. We've had some issues with that, my... Our board has. But we're comfortable that the structure that we have in place will continue placing the importance of local input in the right place, and we'll make sure that the local voices are heard and that local access is maintained. So that's been a multiple-year process. It's about ready to wrap up, and I will be happy to answer any questions anyone has. Bob?
The last time we talked about this, you told me that the big revenue earner in Portland, or in Maine Medical, is cardiology.
Specialty services in cardiology leads the pack. Yep.
Is that still the case?
Yeah, it's the high end, it's the tertiary-level stuff, services that a place like Maine Medical Center or any other large place like that has, that is the true driver, the true economic engine.
So if that's the case, and most of the expertise is located in Portland, a fair distance from the outlying areas.
Right.
How do you maintain levels of service?
Well, cardiology is a great example. We have cardiology services at every one of our organizations and have had for years. We're just expanding cardiology services on the Miles campus to five days a week, with advanced practice provider, nurse practitioner, who's a specialist in cardiology, and then having cardiologists there two days a week. That is much better coverage than we've ever had before. And we're trying to do the same thing with other specialty services, especially some surgical specialty services, such as ENT, ear, nose, and throat, urology. We're working on those services and talking about how we can bring them to the Miles campus. And these are in concert with our friends at Coastal Health Alliance. The cardiologists... Actually, the two cardiologists who come to our place during the week are both from... Are based in Rockland.
Are you centralizing or continuing your effort to centralize patient records so that everybody has access to the same information, no matter where they are in your system?
Exactly. The EMR, the electronic medical record that we have across all the Maine Health organizations is the backbone of this.
So if a doctor isn't in your system but still practices in Waldenborough, for example, he should have access to everything, theoretically at least, that...
They have access for my records from New Jersey.
They don't from mine.
Yeah. It depends upon the practice, so...
Exactly.
Yeah. So the Waldenborough practice, the Lincoln Health Waldenborough practice has been up on Epic for seven or eight years.
You're not part of that practice, though. You're kind of outside the system.
If they're not on Epic and they use Miles, they set up other ways for that doctor to get information. It's not real-time, like you're describing right now.
Is the Waterman practice switched Epic yet? The other?
I think they are on... I think they're on Epic now, are they not? The Penn Bay practice in Waldenborough, are they on Epic?
No idea.
Is that the one you're talking about?
No, actually.
Okay, because I think they are. I think they're up on... They... We've been a little ahead of them with our practices, but we're all going on Epic.
I don't have a question. I just have a attaboy, or a girl. So three weeks ago, I went into the emergency room at 3:30 with a gallbladder. And at 7 o'clock that night, I came out of Miles without a gallbladder. And Dr. Hassan, wonderful surgeon, her PA Craig put up with me, and I will be honest, a little loopy. Julie, a little loopy is not good. Bad things happen when Julie's loopy. So I... Craig, the PA, Dr. Hassan's PA, deserves a big pat on the back because he had to deal with me.
I'll tell him.
I had a nurse from Albania that was fabulous. I had Teresa Lash as a nurse, fabulous. Everybody was great. Whatever they gave me right before I went into the surgical room, the nurses were fabulous. I don't know who they were because they said, "You're going to get a little warm and feel good." And I did. So I just wanted to say, coming from New Jersey and being a bit of a healthcare snob, because we have some of U Penn... I mean, U Penn, Sloan-Kettering.
Yep.
I'm a little bit of a healthcare snob.
Yep.
If somebody had told me that I was going to let a hospital in Damascata do anything to me, I would have been... But I just... I have... I told you right away.
I did.
I said, "You would not believe what I found. It was the greatest medical experience I've had, and I had no pain afterwards, and it was just great." So I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much. You were in great hands with Craig and with Samira.
So we have a thing we call happy letters. And it's when people are really happy, they send us a letter. And I have a file called happy letters. And it's amazing that almost all the happy letters are people whose most of their experience has been going to big-city hospitals. And they end up coming to the... Either maybe they're a tourist in the area or a summer resident. They end up going to a little hospital where everyone knows everyone and they're treated really well. And we get these letters like, "This is the best experience I've ever had."
I have to be honest. I walked in and said, "So I'm either having a heart attack or a gallbladder. It could go either way." And they were like, "Right there for me." Anyway, they were great.
Oh, that's great to hear. Yes, ma'am.
Three things. I love the building. I love the view. Beautiful view.
Thank you.
I love it that the doctors are all in one spot. I love that. And I think you need to get better magazines in the paint.
On it. On it.
On it.
I'll write that one down.
We're on that.
Because...
Are they dated? Or is it just crummy?
Well, it's all old people. Not that I'm...
So we'll get the Rolling Stone. How about that?
And also, too, my husband went in two weeks after hurt to have a gallbladder out. There must be something in the wind or something, but... And he had a successful time, I do. I mean, he went in Thursday afternoon and he left Friday. So it was all good. So kudos to your new building and the new campus. Wonderful. And I'm glad we didn't have to go to Portland. I don't like going to Portland.
I don't blame you.
So if everything can be done right there, that's okay with me.
We're going to try to be able to do more and more. That's our goal.
Yep. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything we can do to help?
Yeah, please, share with us any questions, any thoughts, any comments you hear or any from your constituents about healthcare. We always want to hear those. And anytime you want... Anytime you have a topic that you would like us to try to address for you or some other group here in Waldenborough, we want to do that. So thank you.
So one of my goals for the year is we've had community committees in Boothby Harbor and in Damascata for years. And one of my goals is to build a community committee, to have one put together in Waldenborough and Wiscasset. And so for the people in this community, I think this is the largest community in the county.
It is.
For people who are interested in joining a community committee where we talk about healthcare, we talk about issues, we talk about the things like the why and expanding, you know, the types of things that the why does, it's going to happen this year. So I hope if people are watching this on public access TV and they're interested in being part of our community committee, that'd be great.
Who would they contact?
Me, Scott Schott. And you can just dial the main number and they know where I am. They know where I live.
Can you spell your last name, please?
S-H-O-T-T.
I have a list of people for you.
Oh, that's awesome.
That's what we were going to talk about, I thought, at that meeting.
Good.
That'd be great.
At the why.
We're still working it.
We're working it. I know, I noticed that today.
That'd be great.
Well, Brandy has a question.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question. I've been in the hospital, I went in for three colonosities in the last year. I've been in the hospital, I went in for three colonosities in the last year, and then I went in the emergency room because I wasn't feeling good, and you guys transferred me to Waldo County because I have dialysis. I've never received a bill for anything except Waldo County. And I got a beef with them because I went up there, and what they got me billed for is cardiology, operation, all this bloating, and nothing, none of that happens in Waldo County.
So you didn't receive anything from us?
No, I haven't received anything from you.
You shouldn't have told me that.
Main care and Medicare.
And that may be why, but you still should have received something.
I never receive anything.
Would you like me to follow up on that, or?
Good.
What's your last name?
Randy Akon.
Okay. I will follow up, sir. And we'll figure out how to get back to you.
There's another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any outreach programs for senior citizens? I recently retired and I belong to the Waldenboro area senior citizens, and for the coming year, I think there's a great need there for nutrition, for blood pressure, for activity, learning how to exercise in a chair, anything in your outreach area that we could tap into?
I think we do all of that.
We do, we do, falls, how to prevent falls.
Oh, interesting you should say that. My husband fell last night. Yes, and he has a history of things. So I understand what the physical therapists and the occupational therapists are doing, but just because I'm a newbie into this organization, I would like to know how to get tuned into what you offer and then pick and choose and try to convince the old straight sitters that you can do all kinds of things with a smile and take your medicine and love it.
Yeah, if you would give us your name, we will get the right person in touch with you. Because, yeah, we have all kinds of outreach things going on.
Something like Silver's, is it called Silver Sneakers or something, which is an exercise program?
I like that, Silver Sneakers.
I know the Y does that.
The Y does that.
That's a Y thing?
But we're doing more and more and more with the Y.
With the Y.
Right.
Okay.
We are. So we'd be happy to get you some information on that, get you hooked up with the right people.
I have Mr. Hot Shot's name. I don't remember his first name, but I remember he's...
Hot Shot. So was Craig the PA, hence my problem when I was drunk. Oh, yeah, it was bad.
How old?
He was like 28.
This has been the most enjoyable meeting. I'd pay for some of this.
He was just...
Normally I sing, and I'm quite entertaining, so you're missing me, Jim, you know?
He was at this meeting, I just...
Jim's amazing, Scott's amazing.
Thank you very much for your time.
You are most welcome.
Happy to come back anytime you want us.
We're fun here.
You want to hear us blabber on.
We do.
Thank you.
We try.
All right, we'll move on.
They probably see...
Citizen comments, please. Anybody?
I have a lot of people out here, I don't know if they can hear you.
Good evening, board and town manager.
Your name, please?
David Filbert. I'm the president of Waldenboro, I live on 415 Chapel Road. Just, this presentation before was kind of dovetails into something that I've come here tonight to talk to you about, but one of the things this gentleman said that he's seen the biggest change in is the advancement of technology. And I'm coming here tonight just to talk to you about internet capability on Chapel Road, that we can't advance technology when we can't have good access. And I just want to speak to you tonight, I know there's a move afoot to try to bring spectrum up Chapel Road so we have good access. Another point this fellow said that we're trying to encourage young people to come and jobs, and people cannot stay current, my wife is an example, she needs to keep her nursing credentials up, and she needs to go online. And what we have now for options cannot meet that, she has to go someplace else just to get access. I have a young son who is in the merchant marine profession, and he has to keep studying online. Our current internet access does not allow that. So I'm coming to you tonight just to ask that you continue to move forward with spectrum to bring cable up Chapel Road so we would have that access.
They have agreed.
He's part of the effort, I think. You've been working with John Lawrence, haven't you, to canvas your neighbors and to get them to sign that information sheet? Spectrum has asked people to pass in under franchise, if there are nine houses per mile, they are obligated...
They're obligated.
...to install service. And so we're trying to establish those facts for Chapel Road so that you get it. And I thank you for your efforts to do this.
You'll have those.
It's really important.
That is important. Once we have those, we're golden.
Yep. But it's been a tough slog. It's been like pulling teeth, yeah. But thank you for your comments, it's much appreciated. We will appreciate it.
Well, we're trying. Let's not promise anything.
I didn't promise.
I know, I'm just saying, we're trying, we're trying.
We will get them hooked up.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, okay. We'll go on to the next item, which is select board comments. Katie?
Can we just do an adj... Oh, sorry.
Do you need another adjustment to the agenda?
I do, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can I interrupt you for a second?
It's a road, we had a request for a road name change.
Okay, we can put that in under 10-6?
Yes, sorry.
Any problem with that, anybody? By consensus, 10-5, sorry, it'll be 10-5, road name change? Sorry, Katie, go ahead.
Tomorrow night at the American Legion Post 149 here in town is going to be, they're going to have a veterans dinner, so if you're a veteran, please go on over there, it doesn't cost you anything. They're going to have a pork dinner, I believe, and it's, they're going to make it all special just for you. So there's a veterans dinner tomorrow night at the American Legion. Then on Thursday, November 22nd, which is Thanksgiving Day, there's going to be another Thanksgiving dinner open to the public. If you're alone, have no family to go to, you can come there and have a free Thanksgiving Day dinner, and it'll be downstairs in the Legion. So those two places, specially for you, come on down and help yourself. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do.
I thought you would.
I did, I have a thing I got out of the newspaper, but the print is too small, so I made it big. This was just a letter to the editor in last week's Lincoln County News, and I thought it spoke well for the town of Waldenboro, so I'm going to read it. To the editor, the Lincoln County News makes an excellent effort to keep its readers informed about local issues and events. Thank you. I'm writing to encourage all of us to read more of the paper, don't skip any of the towns. Read the Waldenboro page, for example. Exciting things are going on there if you just turn off Route 1 and visit the village. The Waldo Theater is being renovated. Broad Bay Congregational United Church of Christ is amazing everyone with its fundraising success. Only 20% left to go. NVHS is presenting Shrek the Musical this month. The Madomic Arts Project shares space with a delicious bakery. The Waldenboro Historical Society maintains an outstanding museum of local history. There are wonderful shops, art galleries, breweries, farms, a fine library, restaurants, a bowling and game center, and so much more. If you leave Route 1, you'll discover just how beautiful the landscape is. Rivers, oceanfront, rolling hills, and lovely vistas await you. So please, read all the pages of the Lincoln County News and don't skip Waldenboro. Dorothy Peterson, Newcastle.
That's wonderful. That's really nice.
I thought it was, I thought it was just a little encapsulation of our town, and when you put it all together, doesn't it sound wonderful? I thought that was really nice that someone from another town noticed that.
That's great, thank you for reading that.
And just another, I'm not sure if you know Edward Fisher, but he was on our Conservation Commission here, and he's been a resident of town for quite some time. Anyway, he died Election Day. He'd been ill. And, yeah, anyway, so there will be, and he's not having a funeral here, just a private something later, but in honor of Edward Fisher, there is going to be, he's a musician also, in addition to other things, he was a musician, and there'll be a musical jam by just some of his friends, it'll be at Madomic Arts Project, 13 Friendship Street, Friday, from 6 to 8, and there's, you know, snacks and drinks available and that sort of thing. So if you're interested in listening to music or just saying goodbye, that's available.
Thank you. Is there anything else from anybody? I've got a couple of things I wanted to mention. I wanted to thank Kathy Culka for her service on the Conservation Committee, she's apparently moving to Tennessee, and that means we have at least two people we need to get on that committee as replacements, something to think about. Please go to the Waldenboro Library the day before Thanksgiving and buy a pie. They open their doors at 10 o'clock and they're usually gone within an hour and a half, so get down there, or better yet, bake one and bring it over and donate it. That would be wonderful.
Sho fly pie they have even. They have a great sho fly pie.
Some of them are really, well, all of them are really good. I can't say all of them, I haven't tried all of them, but what I've tried has been great. You mentioned Broad Bay, thank you. The WBA is sponsoring a Christmas decoration contest, and get your application in and get your houses decorated. The prizes are, they're nice prizes, and I think that, I think the awards are made during the first, when Santa comes to, when Tanner comes to the village.
Oh, yep.
I think they announce the awards, so. And on, tomorrow evening, we're going to have a young author, author from Waldenboro talk about the novel she just wrote. And I've asked people who've read the novel, and they tell me it's really good. It's called The Secrets They Left Behind, and I encourage you to go, it's going to be a great event.
Who's the author?
Kay Flanagan.
Yeah, thank you.
Kay Flanagan.
Any relation to the daughter of?
Senior, well, at Madomic Valley High School.
She's a high school student.
Yep. Town manager's report.
We are working on a ConnectMe grant, trying to get Flanders Corner, the six unserved people there, or underserved. It's, I'm working with them.
Thank you.
Because we need to figure out what we can apply for that's going to be successful. The auditors started today on our audit from 2017.
And that's early, I might add. I mean, have they ever started?
Well, no, yes, they have. It's early for us in recent years.
Okay.
We did fill one of our patrolman positions, we still have one open, and I do believe we have success with a reserve officer, which I'm really pleased with. So the chief, I call him Chief Lash, but it's really Chief Lash. Chief Lash's first week, I have to say, was a trying week as far as calls went, we had some rough calls this week, so we just, it's been great. And we really, we picked, we picked the right, we picked the right one. He's just, there's a lot of happiness in this building right now, and it's a good thing. So I just wanted to let you know, we're still searching for one patrolman, we're headhunting, we come up with ideas every day, we go out, knock on doors. Okay, so I went to one house, knocked on a door, drove them out. I mean, you know, it happens. The other issue is, I just want to bring up, fireworks are a huge issue on Facebook. See, I love Facebook because it makes me crazy. I like to post cute little pictures of puppies and my grandbaby. Everybody else wants to complain about fireworks. So I'm just going to put this out here. The fireworks that we're going to talk about tonight, that is not something that this board even started. This is one individual who got enough signatures to put it on the ballot. These lovely women and gentlemen are not out to destroy the Fourth of July. This is not what this was about. This was one individual who came here and asked some questions and did his own petition. I mean, it's really taking on a life of its own. So I just wanted to put it out there. It's not something that we're spending tax dollar, taxpayer money on just because somebody up here had an issue. These are citizens initiated petitions, that's the great thing in Maine, you can do that, you can change the world, it's a good thing, unless it's fireworks, and then it's a bad thing. So, just so everybody knows, that's what's really going on. I just, I had to say that. I tried to fix it. The other big thing on Facebook is tipping public employees at the transfer station.
What?
So, again, a wonderful idea to tip public employees.
Yes, I saw that.
Would be great, if you could. Legally, no public employee can accept money. So as well-intended as that is, you can't do it because they can't accept it. So the GoFundMe page probably should not exist for the public employees up at the transfer station, yes.
So please don't put them in the position.
So don't put any of my employees in the position. When I was in New Jersey, I worked for a very affluent town, and one of my select board members who was awesome, he looked like Val Kilmer, which, that was Superman at one point, anyway, he thought it would be great to come in, and it was his first six months on the select board, and he left us the most amazing gift cards to Nordstrom for 10 grand each.
Oh.
Because he gave his secretary 20, and he thought 10 was good for the rest of us. $10,000, and we had to give it back. So, we can't accept money, even in New Jersey, it's a bad thing.
Can you make cookies and cakes for them?
I think anything you can eat. I, that's always kind of been my litmus test. If you can bake it and bring it in and everybody can enjoy it, I think it's fine, but the money can't be done, or gift cards, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be great, but we can't. So that's all the happiness I have, I'm a Grinch.
Thank you.
Bah humbug.
I'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the consent calendar.
One second?
Second.
Discussion? The only thing I want to discuss about the consent calendar is the way we're approving it, and I'll reserve that for another meeting.
We talked to the auditors about that today.
Yeah, good, okay, I have some...
Katie's right.
I'm sorry?
Katie's right.
Excuse me, he's still behind.
I know, it hurts me to say that.
All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, unanimous. All business. We need a select, a board volunteer for the Lincoln Health YMCA discussions that were mentioned tonight.
If I could...
You have some background on that?
So, my great dream to solve poverty and the opioid issue, I think a big part of that puzzle piece will be developing a relationship with Lincoln Health and the YMCA, and as you found out tonight, they offer a lot of programs in Damascata, in Booth Bay, but we don't have a satellite here for that, and that's what we're trying to accomplish, is how could we bring some of those services that you now go to Damascata for right here to Waldenboro? And one of those ways is, what would a building like that look like, how would that fit within to the community center, our rec department? So I think in order to have these conversations, it's great for me to have them, but I really think that we need two volunteers from the select board to be involved in this with me. That way, there's a second and third pair of ears, or at least a second pair of ears listening to the same thing that I am. Because to me, there's a lot of issues in Waldenboro. This can affect actual change, and this is like life affecting change. That's how I look at it.
So you're looking for two volunteers?
I'm looking for two of you, two victims.
What does it entail?
You're going to have to meet, I'm assuming, several times, they're day meetings, so you'd have to have some availability during the day. I mean, I can be flexible about that, but I, I think it's going to require actually going to a lot of meetings, and shaking hands and getting people to know you.
These in Damascata or here, or...
It can be wherever. I mean, it can be wherever. I mean, I think, you know, I have a meeting on the 29th in Damascata at the Y for our second meeting about this. But I think it's important because one of the problems is, we don't, we're not known. We kind of like to be ourselves, and, you know, one of the things that we've learned, and I think, I'm going to bring it up because it's the Shellfish Committee, one of the things we've learned is we can't be an island unto ourselves, we need to be part... We need to partner, and I think that's probably one of the best things that show how well we do when we partner with other organizations and the state. It's the same concept, is you can't just be an island to yourself, and that's what we've tended to do. So I, I think, I think we need to have, make these relationships happen. I think they're important relationships to foster with Maine Health and with the Y.
I'll volunteer.
I'll do it. I just went to a meeting today, just before I got here, moments before the Lincoln, and this is to go over the Lincoln County Health profile. It was, and it's huge, and then what they did was to define it down into priorities that came from the survey. They have to do this every so, every so many years it has to be done, and the fellow who spoke tonight also introduced, he introduced this. They call it China. And, and it was interesting. I, I brought some of this if you're interested in looking at it, and it was a group, I think they said maybe they had 90 people there. It's either 60 or 90. I don't know which way this, no more went. But I got a call, and because Waldeboro was one of the high-service towns, and there was nobody from Waldeboro signed up to go to that, that meeting, and they really wanted Waldeboro represented there. Lots of people from Booth Bay Harbor.
Mm-hmm.
A lot.
And that's where we've fallen behind.
Right. And one person was there from Waldeboro who couldn't stay for the whole meeting because she had a select board meeting to get to.
Well, thank you for going.
So, anyway.
Tell me something, do, do other towns have representatives on this?
Other towns, like he said, have a committee, and other towns actually have board members on both the YMCA board and the Lincoln Health board. So we've really never, and apparently there's been inroads. I mean, there, there has been off, offers made past town managers, past select board members, and there hasn't been a lot of interest. I, I, you don't know what's out there until you're part of it, you know?
We need to integrate.
We do. We need to integrate, and, and it's, you know, a lot of times people say, oh, well, you know, Damascata or this town or that town looks down on us, and sometimes it's, we don't want to associate, and we do. I mean, that's the one thing I think we're learning, is that sharing services and sharing things, sharing is caring. We need to do those things. So I just think that's great. So Bob and Jan are the victims or volunteers, however you want to look at it.
Is that okay with you, with you folks?
Try to play well with others.
You go, that's the sharing.
Yeah.
Select Board Subcommittee Discussion.
So this was my idea, and I put it in my town manager's report for three weeks, three reports in a row. I think it would be a great idea to involve all of you in, in my past life, I've always had subcommittees of, and I'm not a big, I think sometimes we overcommittee everything, but I do think there's certain things that you as the select board should be intimately involved with. And I just want to start the conversation about setting up subcommittees with two of you on certain subcommittees. For right now, we have Abden and Jan for the negotiation subcommittee, essentially. Bob and Abden are on the, well, kind of like a informal finance committee, which has worked really well. I think we need to do those things so that everybody is involved, and again, it's not just me telling you what's going on. You're interacting with the department heads, and you're interacting, and it makes you more involved. I did hear during my evaluation that sometimes you guys felt that I was maybe, I just go ahead and do things, and that's just things that I do, and I don't think you're as well aware of what I do on a daily basis, and this would give you guys a really good idea of the things that I'm dealing with too. I think it just gets everybody more involved, and that way, again, it's more than just one set of ears getting involved, you know? I mean, Abden and I went down to Main Water, you know, we could have a utility subcommittee. I'm just saying, maybe think about what you, your interests are, or what committees there should be. I mean, personally, it would be nice if we, I love the finance committee idea. I think that works really well. You know, a public events subcommittee, you know, things like that, public emergency services, where even if you guys just came to, you know, our emergency services meeting that we have, two of you could attend without there being an issue. It just keeps you better informed, I think, and would be an excellent.
I'd like to see an insurance, a medical insurance or health insurance subcommittee.
I think that would be underfunded, because again, you're getting way too many, you've gotta make them a little bit more broad, Bob.
Okay.
You know, and also the health insurance will be dealt with during the negotiations. So you'll get more bites at the apple.
Fair enough.
But just think about it, and if I could put this on the agenda for the second meeting in December, or whatever meeting we have in December, just gives you time to think about it. You can chat with each other or me and figure it out.
My understanding was that one of the reasons you wanted this was for continuity.
Well, that's-
Four ears are better than two.
Right.
Six are better than two, and if you have more people at the board level involved in some of the things you're doing.
Right.
You're, you're providing some of that continuity as well as a basic knowledge.
I guess my problem is, is that I think we have a lot of committees, but there's a lot of really important work that you guys don't see, and you think, oh, I go to this committee meeting, that's, but you're not have any clue of what I'm doing other than what I put in my report, and sometimes it would be really nice to have one of you sitting next to me and saying, what do you think about that? Because honestly, sometimes I have like these really crazy ideas, and I think it sounds great, and then I tell you guys later, and you're looking at me like I have two heads, you know? So.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Kind of keeps it narrowed down.
Do you want, do you want us to vote on this, or?
I want you to think about, I thought maybe we could just think about it, and then, like, I could put it back on the agenda, and we could come up, maybe we could circulate which committees I think would be a good idea, and then you can tell me again if I have Medusa's snakes coming out of my head, or if I'm gonna, okay?
I don't think that's a bad idea at all. I think there are a lot of organizations that, that require that, and then they, they require that you be on two subcommittees. And, and I don't think that's a bad idea. The only thing I would just be wary of or careful of is to make sure that, say, like Abden and I are doing the negotiating, that we make sure we get information from the board and that we-
Right.
-share what we learn with the board.
That's what, so that when we have these committee reports, that's what you guys do then. Now, that's a bad situation because that's privileged, but say we're doing the, finance committee comes up with a fabulous plan for health insurance, that would be what Bob and Abden would report on then.
And they would report to the board because-
To the board, correct.
Yeah, so that we all are involved.
Right.
So that we don't have some people that know all this and that, and then, then the rest of us are-
Right.
Huh?
Right.
So I-
But I just think that that would be something that we should really think about. I, I, I think that of all the committees, we could really get a lot done that way, especially, we only meet twice a month, and it will just help get more done, I think. I think it's a good idea.
Water system.
So, all of you received this lovely document, which we were emotionally prepared for when Main Water came the last time. Very nice, very nice. Very scary stuff, no. There is some cost involved in this. What I thought we could do is just acknowledge that we did receive it and set up when we would like to have Main Water come and review it with us. And they can bring their rate documents with them then to the rate increase, or is that good for you guys?
Yeah, the one thing that study didn't do was address the issue of recommended rate increases.
Well, they needed this done first.
Well-
And then-
They're tied.
Well, they are, but this is from an engineer, not from Main Water.
He does come up with cost analyses for-
Right, and that's what they're gonna use to do the rate analysis.
Short-term and long-term.
So if you think the second meeting in December or the first meeting in January is good.
The second meeting in December is Christmas.
I will not be here.
Neither will I.
So.
I might be able to be here.
That's another item on the agenda. So, yeah, we can change that date, but-
We can do a different day.
Yes.
Some of this stuff needs to be done. I mean, the water study, there's a lot of water we don't keep track of. I mean, it's going somewhere, and I regard that as sort of urgent, and Julie takes a more laissez attitude because she's used to water departments. I'm not.
Well, she's just a town manager.
Yeah, well, no, no, it's, it's just-
I think we need to do that the first meeting in December.
Yeah, first meeting in December, okay.
Thank you.
What about you guys?
Didn't you talking about the rate increase in January, something like that? I mean, that's, we talked about moving on that as quick as you could, so.
This'll tie into that somewhat.
So we'll do the first meeting in December, is what?
Yeah.
December 11.
December 11. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Do you need a motion on that, Bob?
I think that's a scheduling issue.
It's just scheduling.
I think we're okay.
Good.
Okay. Item 10, new business. The fireworks petition for placement on the June 2019 warrant.
We have the petition. It has been verified by the clerk. You just have to vote to place it on the ballot for June 2019.
Could I have a motion, please? And we'll discuss it after we get the motion made and seconded.
Make a motion to have the fireworks petition on the June 19, 2019 warrant.
Is there a second? I'll second it. I'll second the motion. Discussion.
Is there, is, is that something that the board must do if a, I'm not, not clear on the rule, if a citizen gets X number of signatures? Is it then mandatory that that go on the warrant? Is that something that, I mean, is that a choice that the board makes, or is that something that they do?
It's a very bad precedent not to-
It's your choice.
I mean, in the, in my experience, we have, we have always done that.
We've always done it.
Yeah, that, but I'm just asking the question, is-
It's, it's not, technically, no. You're not required to put it on. You could vote no. But it's a citizen initiative, essentially.
The guy worked really hard to get these signatures, and I think it's, I, I think it's, first of all, as you indicated, he's right to do it. He's gone out and done it. He was turned back once because he didn't have enough. He went out and got the rest. They've all been verified. People ought to have a right to vote on it.
Didn't?
A lot, we voted on this, what, two, three years ago, Clint? Three, yeah, a while back.
I know, we already voted on this, right?
Yep.
We, we have an ordinance.
We do have an ordinance on fireworks.
We have a policy out there, yeah, yeah. I was disturbed by this name-calling, that bombing and terrorists. I, I didn't like that. That bothered me a lot, that.
Okay, but that doesn't-
Well, I mean, it was part of-
That doesn't deal with the substance of the petition, which is-
I haven't seen the petition.
To, to not ban fireworks, but limit them to the Fourth of July, other town-wide holidays, and to have a cutoff time of 10 o'clock.
We should, I haven't seen a copy of the, that petition.
I haven't either.
So you, you're telling, I haven't, I mean, I don't know what the petition is.
Then I would entertain a motion to table this until the next meeting, so we can all see the language on the petition.
Okay. Well, we, we had seen it when he submitted it the first time.
Well, someone who says she hasn't seen it, so.
Right, but he was told to go back and do his own thing, and I have not seen-
That's, he chose to keep it exactly as it was presented that night here at the board meeting.
Well, I think our memories are a little-
Not a problem.
Yeah. I'd entertain a motion.
We have plenty of time.
I'll amend, I'll amend the motion to table it for the next, for the first meeting in December, June, December 11.
Yeah.
So that the board has a chance to look at the language.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, so it's tabled until the December 11 meeting.
So the next one is the placement of the war, on the June 2019 warrant of a question for the sale of West Waldeboro Community Center to the Waldeboro Historical Society for a dollar. And the only reason this came up is Daryl's fault, is that it would appear we do have to have this on the warrant, even though we've already done all the work. It does have to appear on the warrant, so do you have a problem with putting that on the warrant?
No.
And I'll also do the question, we'll have the question made up ahead, and we'll do that on December 11 also, so that it's very clear.
Okay, but Jean Lawrence was here tonight, so to just talk about it, so we can get some more background information, if you don't mind.
But, okay.
And we will, obviously we'll, yeah, go ahead. Why don't you come up, Jean, and stand at the podium?
Talking off the top of my head, but the original deed was done by the trustees of the community club all those years ago. I was floored when I saw it, and saw how much they paid you for it. Couldn't believe it. $100. I only gave them $1, but anyway. Their trustees are all gone.
Right.
And their, their, their club is almost nonexistent, and so they have to, I believe, have all of those people that are still members of the club and are living sign off on it because they don't have any trustees to sign off. So they're gonna have a Christmas party so they can all sign off.
And then we have to turn it over, so it's, it's just, it's just a matter of-
It's a formality.
It's a formality.
It's a formality, but the thing is, in order to do something with that school, we've got to raise funds, and while we have had some yard sales there, if I'm going to write grants, I need to be able to say that we own the building, otherwise I can't write a grant for it. So I'm just hoping that the people of Waldeboro want to save that school. A lot of people are very, very happy that it's going to be saved, and we've got, there's a lot of work that has to be done to it, which comes to, you know, over thousands, thousands of dollars, let's put it that way. And so we've got to be able to own it in order to get funding for it, okay? So please, 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 like, vote the right way.
Thank you very much. So you're gonna set up the formal language of the warrant?
Yep.
We'll book it and vote next time and discuss it.
I just want to do the deed. And then we have the letter requesting the extension of the agreement with Main Water. All it is, it's a simple letter, just saying we would like to request the extension, but I know when they were here the last time, we wanted to really sit down and review that whole agreement. Again, something that would be great for a subcommittee.
It would be.
So I just wanted to make you aware that we have that. I don't have any intention of signing that. In the past, it would appear that the town manager just signed that, but I, I thought that would be something we'd want to look at.
When does this current agreement expire?
Uh, November 30, and I just got the letter, so.
This November?
Yes. So.
So let's discuss it at our next meeting in November.
We will have it, right, and I will circulate the copy of the agreement.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to discuss board meeting dates for the rest of the year, and we, we And we, we missed a meeting in October, that was partially my fault.
It's all your fault.
Partly Abden's fault. Stuff happens. So, the, the next meeting in November is gonna be on the 27th. Is anybody gonna have a problem being at that meeting?
It's about Thanksgiving.
The first meeting in December is on the 11th. Can we all be here for that?
Yes.
All right. And Katie's going on strike on Christmas Day, so we can't have a meeting on Christmas Day.
That's right.
So, my request, given all the stuff we still have to do and haven't even covered yet, is that we schedule a second meeting in December sometime. And maybe it's the week after the first meeting, say on the 18th.
I cannot do the 18th, I have to be in New Jersey on the 18th and I cannot get out of it.
The 4th, December 4th and 11th.
That's a week after the November meeting, so December 4th and December 11th.
It's a new month.
So three weeks in a row, we're gonna have meetings. Fine with me, as long as everybody's okay with that.
I prefer not to change the dates.
Okay.
I mean, personally, I, I schedule my world around the dates that are on there. And so it can cause issues when they, when we change them to another week.
You don't think we can get stuff done the 27th and the 11th?
I'm sorry?
Do, do you not think we can get the stuff done on the 27th and the 11th?
Well, we just had some gentleman walk in and give us a half-hour presentation on Lincoln Health. I mean, stuff like that comes up.
Yep.
And if we're not here, we miss the opportunity, or we, we miss the obligation to do something.
They should prioritize stuff, though, if that's the case.
Well, we have a list of what's, we have a number of things on the 11th, but they're not, some of them are.
December 11th.
Are quickies.
It would be better to do it after the 25th, if we're gonna have another meeting, because one, two, three, that is.
That's kind of a busy time in life.
Yeah. It's up to you guys, but, it would be nice to have one at the end of the year because there are things that at the end of the year come up. If you could do it after the 25th that week, that would be lovely. Better than doing it the 4th.
The same week as the 25th?
As the Christmas week, yeah.
Say the 28th on a Friday?
We haven't set our Christmas day yet, so I can't, we don't do it on the 25th because we have too many, too big a family.
The 25th's on a Tuesday, so.
So, well, we pick a day. They, I, I don't control that.
I, I mean, I just, I just think the 4th, it'd be better to have it at the end of the month than all at the beginning, that's all.
I have no axe to grind, I just feel strongly we ought to be meeting twice in December somehow, if we can.
Maybe we ought to leave the dates that we have and really, you know, try to work through everything we have for issues. It said prioritize stuff.
Right.
If stuff doesn't, can be handled after the 1st of the year, then so be it.
So you just want to stick with one meeting, I'm hearing, the 11th, okay?
That's what I'm hearing too.
Okay.
So our next meeting is on the 27th of November and then we're meeting on the 11th.
Yep.
And, oh, that's enough.
What, what time on the 27th?
We have an executive session on the 11th at 5:00.
And you're going to have contract negotiations, because we have to get that done, so you're gonna start at 5:00 on the 27th.
Yeah.
5:00 at all times.
And you guys can start signing these.
My name's Annice Hall.
Very nice.
There was a road name change to discuss tonight.
Yes, so we've had a request to change Gergely Lane, does that make sense? Is that, am I saying that right?
Gergai, I believe.
Gergai. But that's, okay.
That's the problem.